Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Mike Rossi, Chairman of the Planning and zoning Commission. I would like to call the regular monthly meeting in order. While they uh start, please call a roll.
Mike Florio.
Here.
Ellen Dahlgren.
Yeah.
Dylan Walter.
Here.
Jay Mandel.
Here.
Zach Ford.
Here.
Eddie Alvarino.
Here.
Cinzi Latieri. Beau Clark.
Here.
Robert Corson.
Here.
Brian Pellegrini, who is not able to attend tonight. Susan Marcus.
Here.
Mike Ross.
Here.
Okay, I would like to see Susan for uh uh Virginia. And we have a forum. Uh. I have no comment. Uh sorry. Uh do you think? Go on to review, oh wait, I do have comments, sorry. Of course I have comments. Um I would like, uh we have an item that came in late. For new business, and so I'd like to have a motion to add. The receipt of planning and zoning commission twenty-five dash sixteen. A text amendment to section twenty-seven. Uh to add adaptive reuse of existing building. In the B two, B three, B four zones. Uh this would be item five D.
So moved.
One second.
A second.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Vote. Who should carry, thank you. Okay. Go to item three, uh minutes. Um. Uh review approval of the July fourteenth meeting minutes, were there any corrections or changes? Hearing none, I would entertain your motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July fourteenth meeting as presented.
Okay, thank you. Uh discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Standing, who carries? Your opinion?
Everything.
Um okay. Uh where are we, staff report? Um. For. Planning and zoning commission twenty-five dash fifteen, you want to hold to that until we get to it in the whole business? Okay. Uh so go on with uh. I'll pick her up in a second. Uh go on to twenty, the financial report that you had.
Yep, so this is just a summary, I know we said that we wanted to make sure that you were.
Oh, I needed to. Uh it's got here, so we're at seven oh four. Um so Susan, I'm sorry, you're both.
So give.
Okay. Now go ahead.
Alright, so I I know that the commission wanted to make sure that you had at least an annual update of what was happening with the budget, so that you kept our information form. So this is uh where we wound up at the end of fiscal year twenty-five, we're now in fiscal year twenty-six um as of July first. So we did um have season savings in our budget this year predominantly um due to some timing of when salaries were transferred, transition changes in positions. And contractual pieces, so sometimes there's budgeted money in there that depending on how contracts set a lot does or doesn't get used, so. Um those are numbers that are generated in the finance department, so we've kind of took them and plugged them into our budget at one time. So that was actually money left over, um the outside of salaries, our our operating budget for the year was thirty-eight thousand one hundred dollars and um. What I tried to do is just give you a quick summary of where we didn't spend the full amount and where we went over and why. So a couple of things, um the, so again salaries, I talked about a little bit, um travel expenses, we've been really trying to do a lot of online trainings wherever possible, um so we really haven't had. Reimbursements for mileage, that's typically what that's for. Training budget, um the training that was was spent on staff, there is a budget that everybody should be aware of for the commission members to attend, you know, a paid session, and who budgeted last last year is this year fifty dollars a person. So if there are things coming up and we still need your training hours, we every single year, we make sure every single person has that money available to them, so. Um so please, please, if you don't, if you see a cost on something, don't avoid it, you know, ask us if there's money available. Um and then if if people are. Already have their or have already met their training requirements, that money then becomes available for others if we need to get a couple more classes in for somebody, so we want to make sure everybody is compliant by the end of this uh this reporting period. So that's going on, um. The GIS services is where we went over, and that had to do with just some extra costs in the assessors budget. We have enough within this budget to sort of transfer things over, we'll work that out with the finance director, that's not a significant. Issue, we are budgeted to cover the entirety of the assessment stuff this year, so we should be all set with that, that's just kind of a function of how the money is got written this year, so uh and it was sort of a transition year between town managers, so that's that's kind of the reason. Um professional services, we typically spend down pretty well every year, that's all of our required dues and memberships that we have to have, and for those of us who have to have certifications to staff, um that's where that comes from. Hostage is always right down to the wire, so um we send a lot of letters. General supplies, um again, these are sort of general office supplies, so we only spend that we need, we're not going to spend more than we we have to. And then um for other items, we had an overage last year, and we're able to buy um like the iPad for Kathy's field inspections and stuff in the previous budget, so things that we had in this budget, we just didn't need to purchase. Um and so we, you know, we didn't want to spend just to spend, so we're returning that back over. Um and we can, you know, what we can do during the budget for this year, we'll go through sort of a trend analysis, and you can see what kind of up or down, and then what if you want to cut anything back or or not for the coming year, so.
Any uh questions?
Pretty good. Yeah, I think the only question I had was, and I think she answered it, because I saw the, you know, the other professional in GIS was. Down nine hundred and twenty, and it was significant portion were filled with the other, and that's why you're.
Mm-hmm.
Where you're taking.
Just push it right over, yeah.
Thank you. Um okay. Uh that brings us to new business, we have um. Oh my, yeah. I said, yeah, I said everything. Okay, new business, uh preliminary discussion of electric vehicle charging stations.
Ron Lyman's here.
Okay, go ahead.
I did.
Come on out, state your name for the record, okay?
My name for the record is uh Ron Lyman. And I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman and commission members. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to to speak to you folks. Um we have uh, can I set this, where can I set this, I didn't bring an easel unfortunately, do you want to just lean against some chairs?
Yeah.
How do you want to do that?
Um, thank you.
Oh, thank you so much, I very appreciate it. You're lending me that.
Got it.
Thank you. Nice. So just to familiarize you, folks, which you probably. Know this site very well, but uh. Uh here is uh. The existing Walgreens, here's a traffic light that goes to stop a shop, so if you come out of the. Traffic light to the right of the light, uh zone, you know, it's Walgreens. To the left of the light, I have three and a quarter acres that goes. Uh up to the lot cabin. That I bought, and I think it was two thousand eleven. Fourteen years ago. It's it's been a long time trying to sort out something that made sense here. Uh and uh I feel like I've finally gotten there. Um in fact, even it was difficult negotiating with the with Walgreens, because of the. The fact that uh this was owned by the Slade family originally, and when they made the. The agreement to uh to put uh Walgreens there, they agreed because the Slade owners owned this side too, to put a gate restriction on this side. So you couldn't uh, um you know, for example, I I couldn't have gas convenience if I wanted, because they were afraid a convenience store would sell a Coke or. You know, something that might be the, the uh, uh you know, the pharmacy could sell, so uh and. Uh same thing with the, you know, all these, which is a supermarket, so we had to, we finally worked out a waiver with them, and the landlord signed off, the tenant signed off and so on, so we have to write them a check. In order to be able to uh uh do the grocery store, uh there was never a problem uh with the quick service restaurant. But uh and I do have a signed lease uh with all these. Uh all these uh uh. I know they want to be there, and it took a long time to get them there, uh I mean, it was back and forth, they're they were really tough, tough negotiators. Um and they actually have a ninety day window, actually, that they could. Walk from the lease if they wanted to, uh I don't think that's their intention, but uh. Um you know, they're concerned about costs and and uh and so on, and how how everything, in fact, they're they're concerned about what we're up to here uh tonight, and uh. Um I just go with it, so I'm optimistic that we, God willing, we can work this out in a way that that works for you folks, I I. Would like to, and we do have, by the way, a letter of intent for this property here. Just to let you know, in fact, the lease isn't signed yet, but we're expecting to put Wendy's there. Uh so in the in the quick service restaurant. Uh but this plan uh was actually, we haven't had our civil, which has fed us the same folks who uh who did the Clinton project by the highway that did, you know, that big Y project. Um he's going to be doing the detailed work. Uh but we haven't given him a green light yet until, you know, the leases firm, and they were waiting for. In fact, we had Geotech work down there a couple days ago, and so waiting for results on that, and waiting for results uh. Tonight and so on, and and the concern is uh they, first of all, uh understand your regulations, and I do, and I can appreciate them. Regarding the, you know, the world is changing, and uh clearly, uh you know, EV is the thing of the future. Uh but their concern is presently is, well, cost, but not just cost is, is that they, they want to have all their parking spaces available for their clients. And she can probably appreciate it when you put in the uh EV locations, it says right there for EV. Uh clients only, so and they're finding that at this point anyway, very few, if any, of their clients at this point are are. Driving EVs or requesting information about doing so, so. What I, and I talked to Abby about this in detail, and and kind of what. I came up with, and she seemed to. Seemed to think it was a reasonable request anyway, that's why I'm here, is to try to show you that certainly that's our intent. Uh to have uh EV and and so on, so what I've done with uh all these, they have agreed that they would take their normal twelve hundred amps. And upsize it to right at, right from the get-go to eighteen hundred amps, which would be then more than adequate to uh uh handle the EV chargers. And what they would like to do, and and I'm requesting also, uh is that we can, and these blue spaces are. First of all, we haven't laid out the details where the EV charging spaces would go yet for the uh. For the Wendy's, for the quick service restaurant, but this is where they'd like to have them, you know, about all this. So in any case, there's uh thirteen of of those spaces right there alone. Uh and uh, uh well, maybe that's even enough for the whole place, because I think you have to have ten percent, but in any case, that that's where they're going, and they're being. Uh wired back to them, so the request, why I'm here, is I'm hopeful that you folks would consider uh a text amendment. That would uh uh and I I I'm not, this is not, I'm not an attorney, so, and I know uh wherever you guys decide or folks decide, or hopefully you'll give me some guidance, and. I'm actually going to meet with Abby to kind of sit down on Wednesday morning to kind of go through that signage and so on. But one of the things I was looking at your section here, thirty-three uh point one zero point one five. Uh and of course, it starts off with uh electric vehicle charging stations, any parking lot associated with a commercial and multifamily parking, which contains. More than thirty spaces for cars or light duty trucks. Uh shall provide infrastructure management and maintenance of electric vehicle charging stations for at least ten percent of the parking that people provided. So. What I'm hopeful. Is that since we are. Obviously. Heading that way or trying to do it, but there's uh. You know, it's it's, there's really no demand or or warrant for it at this point. That I would hope that you folks could would consider that the uh that we added on to that section as a text amendment. And that's something along this nature here, uh so believe me, I'm not the uh the best wordsmith or an attorney, but uh bear with me, and hopefully you can. Uh can appreciate what I'm saying, or at least uh I'm getting the right message hopefully across, applicant can request. Approval uh to make provisions for future EV capacity, if not needed or weren't uh warranted initially. By putting in uh amperage that will be, uh the amperage that were required and conduance to future charging stations. Uh and and of course, the reason for that is that way they don't have to change their electrical service, they're already set for it. Uh the same thing with the conduits, they would be put in the ground where all where they would all be going, I'm not. Still, I have to work out some details with the Eversource. By the way, we're going to need six hundred amps for this, this would be twelve hundred, but we're. Making it eighteen hundred because of the EV, so I'm not sure if they go from here to here. Or if they go from here to wherever the transformer is going, and I'm not really sure yet whether it's one train. Who? So that kind of thing has to be worked out, but the these uh. You know, they'll be, the 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 conduits would be going to this location from either the building or from where the transformers are located, and I'm. Guessing ideally, we'd put the transformer somewhere. Uh that wouldn't be, you know, obnoxious right in your face out in front. You know, maybe in back here somewhere, but I don't know, it's really going to be their call, and I don't know if that's one big transformer, meaning enough to handle both, or if it's two separate ones. Uh so I'm not sure, uh we still have to determine that where where they go to, but they're going to go to, you know, wherever. They're supposed to, um so but my favorite, so anyway, uh I'm hopeful that you folks would give me some your. Feelings about this and and some guidance, and uh I I mean, I'd love to make this project a reality. Um I believe uh as long as things like tonight and and uh some of the other things like the Geotech work, I think. Uh knock on wood or whatever, it went along well, but. You know, we're optimistic, this is finally the right right next, and it's going to be a a great situation for uh the town, and obviously a new tax base and jobs, and. And frankly, I'm a little embarrassed the way the place looks, I I it's not my style to have. Uh buildings that look that way, but when I bought the property, um. Four, two years ago, I told folks that when I bought it, uh because the first thing, you know, that, listen, I'm going to tear all these buildings down. In either six months or six years, I don't know which, when I finally figure out what I'm doing, but I'll give you uh, you know, at least uh. Uh you know, we had month-to-month leases, and we still do, and I told them I'd give them uh at least six months notice, because I would then, you know, it would take a while to get the approvals and so on, so they had plenty of time to look elsewhere, so. Now, I six months, six for six years, well, that was fourteen years, so it uh it's not, you know, it didn't go as well as I or as quick as I thought, but I I think we really have a situation now that uh seems to be. Fit the site well, and uh I think uh hopefully you folks like the idea of all these and uh. Uh you know, and Wendy's, um good task space, good jobs, it'll be something nice that we can be proud of. I mean, I've done other developments in the area, but uh I don't, I don't uh, I like to do things nice and keep them nice. Uh you know, we're the.
But. I'm going to interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
Um. Because we've really got two different things going, the main point is the text amendment.
That's still in them, request.
That.
Um, yeah.
Because, you know, any text amendments is going to go beyond just your your project, so.
Uh-huh.
Um. I think it, you know, I want to make sure we do discuss that, not not your project. Um because, you know, that, we're not ready for that at this point.
Yeah.
The text amendment, the one point that. You know, just struck me immediately upon what you've said, is. You know, this idea of what, if and when it was required, basically, the idea of if there was a, you know. Um. Within any kind of amendment that you would make. You're going to need to have some idea, and maybe Abby can help you with this, what those parameters would be.
What a trigger, yeah.
Yeah, what's the trigger that you would need to activate them? Would you be activating them over time, so that you started with, you know, a. A third of what you were required, and then move up to the whole thing as as demand increase? You know, so those are the, I think, going to be the main issues. Uh for any type of text amendment, is making sure that the triggers and. Are in place if you, if we were to adopt it, and then we'd have some sort of enforcement option on it too.
Sure.
Because if, you know, there's no, if there's no teeth. Then, you know, you put it in, and we never see any, any.
I understand.
Um so that those are the things, and your next bow, and then I'll go to you.
I for one will be fully in in favor of a waiver, but I think maybe as a trigger, uh you could base it on the amount of EV, EV vehicles. The ratio of EV vehicles to uh internal combustion engine vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a way to to look at it when it's necessary. I do have a slight concern. When you just mentioned, and and again, this is. This is an issue not specific to yours, but it kind of brought up here.
Yeah.
Um. Looking at this site plan, and I think any, it would apply to any site plan. That. The uh transformers should be put in a place not adjacent to the street. I don't think we want cars running into, so that's something that we should look at in it.
Yeah, well. You're welcome.
Yeah.
We're.
But I think that, you know, there's, I think there's an inherent danger of a car or truck running into them if they're adjacent to the road, so we have to consider that. We're looking at our regulations as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry.
One thing you said initially struck me too was, and uh our regulations don't reflect this, so if someone else is aware, please feel free to correct me, there's no requirement. For electric vehicle charging parking spaces to be for electric vehicles only. It's not like a handicap s- spot where. That's a whole smart, so, so like. Our our regulations as written, and then if satisfied, don't preclude. Gas vehicles from parking in these charging stations, they just maintain, you know, a fair basis for every space. I mean, you don't have to have a sign on there that says electric vehicle or parking only.
I know. Yeah, if if I could just uh, if you don't mind me, you're giving some feedback, Michael, is, could I respond?
Go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, um I agree with everything all of you are saying, first of all, but let me just say this about, maybe I'll go with yours first. We, I developed, you know, the big Y and coal center in Old Sabre. And there are a few uh EV charging stations, and we're giving up to add a few more, but when if you go in there, you'll see it says EV parking only. So I'm just saying they're generally marked that way, because what uh the expectation or the intent is, you don't want to see just anybody parking there, then an EV person comes up, there's no place for you to park, okay? So it is the intent to have them marked that way, and that's generally the way they are, now, I'm not saying your regulations. It have a problem with somebody who's a non-EV person parking there. But uh anyway, so I'm just telling you where, how I see it's generally generally done. Now, I would also suggest, and maybe it's uh somebody had mentioned about the ratio of 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 uh, you know, internal combustion engines versus electric vehicles. And I think that'll be probably fairly easy to to check, and maybe I could have an annual review or something like that, because you folks are going to be able to see. Uh you know, typically, somebody, the zoning enforcement officer could drive by, and once a year say, hey, you know, I see that you've got uh about uh three percent or or now, you know, uh EVs, well, we'll. Probably first of all, put them in before you even ask, because as soon as there, any of our customers want them or interest in them, because as you're probably aware, or at least this is the way Big Y does it, they don't charge them. For doing it, it's a little extra incentive too, to come in, hey, while you're in shopping, you can charge your car, you know, so it's it's kind of a a win-win for both, and and of course, it's, you know, it's uh, so. I I think that first of all, i- it's going to be based on, I can't tell you how how quickly uh the uh customer base of all these is going to switch to uh EV. Uh the future will tell us that, but I think somehow, um you know, when assuming you adopt this text amendment. Uh a suggestion might be that there is something uh in our agreement, even if, you know, going forward or with anybody else, when if they uh want to utilize the text amendment, if it's so adopted. It might be something along the nature of as the vehicles, as as you can see, EV vehicles, but then they're required to within a certain period. After getting notice from the ZEAL or something to hook up somebody, or. I mean, if you need, if all of a sudden there's AV, EV car there, uh I don't think all these is going to want to have to put in eleven oh. You know what I'm saying, because there's got one customer that comes once a, every, once a week, there's an EV, but I'm I'm sure we can kind of dip to the spirit of. Everything you've talked about, and I agree with everything you said, I'm sorry, was that?
Okay. Appreciate you.
I saw it end up.
Yes.
Oh.
So I just, I want to give you some, a little bit of data for the commission.
Uh-huh.
Um in two thousand and fourteen, there were two thousand three hundred and forty-four registered EV cars in the state of Connecticut. Ju- as of July first, twenty twenty-five, there are now sixty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty-six actively registered EVs in the state of Connecticut, that is a. Two thousand eight hundred percent increase in registered EVs in the past ten years.
How many, what percentage, just as a question to you, if you, if I may, of the amount that they say now are registered versus the amount of cars are total, how many, what percentage are are EV of all the first counties?
I'm just pulling EV users, it's obviously.
No, I understand, but you might, I still bet you'll find out there's two or three percent, you know what I mean, so very.
So finish my point, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, so. The closest Aldis that I know of is in Branford. There is not an Aldis in this area, so to say that. All these customers in this area wouldn't use those EV spots, I think is a bit unfair and premature, seeing that we don't know what the capacity is, so.
It might, this is not, not at least not all these uh specific, this this would be an amendment for.
Correct.
Right, go ahead.
So with that being said, there are very few places in Clinton, or really in the shoreline, where there is actually accessible EV parking. What I do know, I own a parked EV uh electric vehicle, is that when I moved back in two thousand sixteen. I could have my my pick of the two EV parkings at Big Y on any given day. In the past ten years, that's no longer the case, in fact, you have people with EVs fighting over the two very scarce uh parking spots between. The Big Y in Clinton and the Big Y in um Old Sabre, Westbrook. We don't know the capacity, because we're really not making the capacity for EVs available. So it's it's kind of the chicken or the egg, are they going to be used, are they not going to be, well, I'll know. Certainly, they won't be used if they're not even there, if they're not even being made accessible to the people who do drive EV cars. If you, if you go out into, you know, bigger malls, bigger areas, there's tons of electric vehicles. So I I think it's a little nearsighted to say that your clientele or all these clientele won't use EV parking, or it's not in demand, we don't really know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, again.
Or or in general, this isn't in general.
A lot of us have comments, you know. In addition to the percent of the registered vehicles, another possible trigger would be the rate, you know, the percent utilization of the EVs that are the charging stations that are there. If you get to the point where, you know, they're being used for. Two-thirds of the hours that the stores are available or whatever. Uh I don't know exactly what the number is, but I think this could be, you know, research, that that's another possible trigger. Is uh availability, uh and the percentage, percent utilization that is uh, you're observing in that particular space. Yeah, makes sense, by the way, just to let you know, uh the Demores are the one who's called me and said, you know, we want to start putting in some more, because we're getting the interest, the Demore family owns Big Y. Uh they called me to tell me that they'd like to add more to uh the old Sabre, Big Y, in fact, we're. Planning to do a li- a little addition now to the property, uh we uh we just recently made arrangements to buy the. Ugly little houses between Duncan's and the and the pet store, and we're putting in, uh we've got several things going on there, and we're going to, at the same time, be doing quite a few. Quite a bit of additional EV, just because there's demand. You know, we want to do, and so don't people like Big Y, they want to do what what their customers want, because they want their customers to shop there. You know, so believe me, it's not a matter of, even though you may have found that people are fighting over them, it doesn't mean that people I'm thinking about putting them in, because they see there is more demand. And when there's more demand, they certainly want to put put more in, but in the meantime, uh because of the way, you know, uh they don't want to have uh, you know, twenty spots and have. Two EVs and have nobody be able to park in those spots, because the way the signage would normally be, so we're all heading in the same direction, and and it's just, you know, this. Little bumps and starts to get there, you know, we must do too many ones, but when they start then getting filled up and and demand for more, they want to do more. Because that's what their customers want, and they're very customer orientated.
Well, yeah, I think that it'd be logical to base it, I'm sure the the amount of EVs could be found on a motor vehicle, I'm sure it's published at.
Um and and I think of a trigger point being the percentage of EVs.
Registered in the state. Would be a reasonable way to go forward with that.
Yeah.
You know, and and you never notice, technology could change as well, I mean. Let's face it, to be honest with you, if you have an EV and your source of electricity is not clean. You're patting yourself on the back for saving the environment, but the person down there generating the electricity is creating the same amount of pollution. So it's, you know, unless your, unless your electricity is generated by, say, wind, solar. Nuclear or or high.
Like it or.
Well, we are totally. Sixty, sixty, sixty percent of ours is generated by natural gas.
Correct, so you're saying thirty percent.
I don't think it's.
Two points.
But that's not.
Yeah, that's not the point, I think the point is making something available to people who are hard that need to charge them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like if you couldn't find a gas station anywhere.
Two point five percent.
Went seven.
Yeah. It was down to right.
Wait, 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 wait. Um. I'd like to. Have you speak, and then we'll come back to you.
Uh Jay.
And. Uh what's the? Like uh, you were already.
Yeah, I I just, I don't think it's about anybody patting themselves on the back, I think it's about making accessible and available to people who have a certain type of car. Um. To have that capability to go go and charge their car, it doesn't matter whether or not they think they're saving the planet, it's about having accessibility.
We don't require a gas station, that's first, you don't require fuel would be safe, so it's a little bit, you know. You have to look at this both ways, it's not the responsibility of the entire world to generate for the two point seven percent of EV. two point seven percent of EVs in the in the state.
It's not the responsibility of the highways and and road.
And and we all pay with the highways.
We can get into.
But we don't, we don't require.
That that's a completely different argument, and it's not related to this at all. Uh, Jay was.
I have a question. What's the ratio? How many, for how many spaces do you have to put how many electric?
You have to put uh ten percent is what.
Ten percent on new build.
Correct, sir.
You know, and one other thing, we gave those people who wanted to put in an electric charging station that stop and shop the hardest time.
Yes, we did.
That's because they had the big.
Yes, they wanted to do.
It was nitpicking.
No, that that was a different.
So, I mean, just in terms, like, back to the concept of responsibility, as a government agency, legislative agency, it is our responsibility to set our regulations to provide some sort of like plan, uh, obviously as our thing, commission. Um, how does our P O C D align with this and the idea of conservation, you know, uh, excuse me? We are gearing towards that way, so adding in carb outs is not conducive to what we're overall planning. I do, I think this is a great project and this is something I, it sounds like in a tenuous situation and project specific. I I want us, you know, I'm excited for something like this, but I think s- spot changing things like this is not what the purview of this commission is. It's more so.
And that's a good point. It's not a spot. Okay, it would be for the entire.
The purview of this commission is to maintain an overall.
Right, but this would be, this would not be a spot change. It would be a change for the entire zone. That whatever, you know, zone we put this in or however you, so what I would like to see. It would be, um, you know, I I don't see any reason for us to not entertain a proposal to uh make this change to our regulations. Um, if the uh applicant is willing to work with uh Abby and the and come up with trigger points. Things that we can actually consider that would be real, um, uh, real items that we could work on. Because right now, we're talking kind of airy-fairy here and it's not, we're not getting specific enough.
Mr. Chairman, may may I excuse you for one minute, two minutes, one minute. Maybe a few.
Yeah, but but I think, I don't know. So that, I mean, that's what, you know, this preliminary discussion is for is would we be willing to uh entertain this? And I think personally, I think it's something that um, is worth uh pursuing as far as, you know, having something solid brought to us that we could uh look at, in both.
I think, as we mentioned before, tying it with the amount of EVs, but I think we also have to set a minimum limit as well, because as Alan just pointed out, the percentage of EVs in the state is two point seven percent. So if you broke that down to strictly to the percentage of EVs, you'd have a little sliver of a parking space. So I think when we consider this, not only should we have a trigger, but we should also have a minimum as well.
Yeah.
If I can. Some some of the stuff, so when we talk about how we set those trigger points, the more concrete and consistent we can be. So if there are, if there's moving data that could be a point of argument in future applications on any project, I would say I would shy away from having to do calculations for data that doesn't necessarily exist, sort of or be generated within the town, because it makes, it makes the staff job, it makes the commission's job harder. Um, you know, things like enforcement for how you go through, i- it's it's a more difficult thing. And so thinking through, if a site plan has to be completed within five years without extensions, if there are provisions that say you could wait, you know, and and at some point, you know, the construction is unlikely to take a full five years, and so, um, at some point, the certificate of occupancy needs to be signed. You don't get a C O if you don't have zoning compliance sign off. So so part of this conversation is what do you need to get occupancy of that building? And and so the question is, is the commission comfortable with a make-ready scenario? Only is the commission more comfortable with a make-ready for all required ten percent, but only install prior to C O a certain percent? Or nothing, it doesn't sound like nothing at all is necessarily on the table, but you know, what what is, is there some initial component to this that needs to be considered?
I would, I would think for my thing, and um, just speak to me, is I would want them ready. But not necessarily, you know, I I think that it's so that they can be put in easily. You know, you need to have the conduit and everything in place. Um, not necessarily have.
It's not a huge project when they have it installed.
I would absolutely agree.
I I.
You you can, this is a discussion, so yes, you may.
Um, so we're looking at the percentages, but if in our town, we do not have a number, a a large number of the spaces, it may be difficult to locate just this percentage because we don't know um, without a lot of uh future building, um, so that we're having more of these optional spaces, whether or not this is something that's realistic for the town. It seems it could be a little premature to determine just based on what the average is for the state um, or what the growth is in that particular area without having more availability, seeing this is what we've experienced in the last two years, the last five years, just within our town.
Um, go ahead.
Hopefully, you said, I think the, uh, I think Ellen throughout the utilization, I don't know if that's something that can be monitored on our end or something, but I think that's an excellent. You know, if you put one in and then as seventy-five percent utilization, a second one and then two or both, or some argument, you know.
I think that would, it's it's a good idea, but I think it would be very, very hard to monitor.
That's, you would be relying on data provided to us, not, we don't have the capacity to study some of the people in town.
It's a good idea, but I agree with you, but I.
Both.
I I would, I would say that the concrete piece is the number of parking spaces required and the percentage of which is either made ready or installed. And the issue that we will have is the trigger point for things that happen post-CO. Right? Because the CEO is saying that a site and all zoning improvements have been stalled according to the permit. And so what is the mechanism after that point, after the site plan is totally compliant? What's the next mechanism when there's no application pending for the admission? And we can't reach outside of the permit to say, okay, ten years from now, we want you to come back. So that's, that's going to be the thing. So is it, you know, i- if you have, you know, the following types of additional work? If you do work on more than five percent of your overall site in the future? If you upgrade to a, you know, if there's other changes that require other permitting, we could have a zoning provision that says when these things happen on sites that came in under this provision, new applications are required to come into compliance to this percentage, or whatever that looks like, we can play around with a little bit. Um, you know, a benefit too is with the make-ready. It's an economic driver, and so there's, there's an element here of some of the subsidies and some of the things that folks were relying on to install these stations have gone away. And so the the penciling out of these projects is more difficult. So when we talk about townwide pieces, um, you know, Mr. Liman is not the only person who is, who said to me, I'm concerned about the number of EVP, you know, stations I may have to install. Um, because of just the sheer cost. And so it's, it's, it's a real, it's a real economic consideration. Um, but I don't know that I could even give faith recommend that there's no make-ready subsurface or electrical components that are are available to folks. It seems like at least make it very easy for someone to put these in. Um, and we talked a little bit about that too, but.
So, um, what I, my recommendation then is to go ahead and uh work with Abby to try to develop something for us. Um, uh, and so we can consider it and give you uh due consideration.
I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman, and all of yours too. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one, uh, we give is politics overview of the twenty twenty-five legislative session. There was a lot going on that applies to uh planning and zoning code.
All right. So I did just a quick, um, a quick slideshow for you. I I tried to pick out the highlights from some of the major legislation for you. I will send this out or we will send this out to tomorrow. We can also send you the O P M. Um, Ivan sent some of the legislative updates, which is a summary for municipalities that includes things beyond this that have to do with assessments and other topics that aren't necessarily land use related. So this is really just kind of the land use summary. So I will try to go through it quickly because I know we have applicants waiting, so. Um, but just a real quick, a real quick piece. It was a pretty active session. There was lots of stuff that was, um, you know, so there's some controversial pieces and some things that didn't pass that may come back in the future. Um, I, to to do this, I pulled, so big thank you to River Cog, O P M, um, and just my great hero legislation, but um, both River Cog and O P M maintain sort of tracking uh tools that they use that that they pass out to towns and they're, they do a fantastic job of that. So there, just in summary of some of the things that we are going to have to consider. Um, there are things that we are going to have to do as a result of these legislative changes, and there are things that we can consider doing. And I'll run through what some of those are as we go. Um, some of the bigger things, so there are some P S D hazard management plans, H M P, requirements that will come into play over time. Um, there are some zoning provisions that we'll have to evaluate. There are changes to coastal site plan reviews that we should, we'll talk about tonight that are are important. Um, inland wetlands, sitting the commission, Kathy brief the commission at their last meeting, but there is some training, mandatory training for inland wetlands, commission members, um, and some of the application documentation for studies, technical studies will change for the commission, starting pretty soon. There are other provisions in here, um, that, you know, we can consider using, and some of them, um, you know, have to do with how we handle residential and commercial property and a lot on resiliency planning. Um, so that that was really a theme in what came through this year. So, and this is a little bit tiny. I don't know how to make this bigger on your screen. A little bit. I'll run through, like I said, you'll have all of this, um, as we go. All right. So the plan of conservation and development, um, just something to keep in mind that after October first of twenty twenty-seven, there are specific resiliency provisions that need to be in the P O C D as well as planning for certain tools relative to resiliency like transferring development rights out of higher-risk areas and allowing more development in other places. We are doing our P O C D now. We won't be strictly subject to these new standards until we either change the P O C D or, you know, update it in ten years. However, we spend a lot of time and and many folks in this room, we're, we're, you know, participate in those committee discussions. Our P O C D will reference the ability to do the things in the new statute so that if there's grant funding available, if there are other pieces that we can consider, it's all um sort of covered in in our P O C D already. So we're not, so we don't miss out on anything if, um, if the the opportunity arises. So we may not have all of the depth that they would require in twenty-seven, but we will be enabled in a way that will keep us consistent. Same thing with our hazard mitigation plan. We just started the hazard mitigation planning process, um, through the River Cog. That is actually, uh, the contracted consultants is also resilient land and water, so we have some consistency there, which is great. Um, and and then again, after that, that twenty twenty-seven date, um, there are some specific elements that will have been included that will likely build into this hazard mitigation plan so that we have, um, you know, so we're funding eligible. For zoning regulations, this is a little bit of a change, everybody have some time. Um, by October first of twenty-seven, our regulations shall, not may, shall, include provisions to mitigate and avoid negative impacts to public health and welfare and the environment due to sea level change, using the most recently adopted sea level change scenario, which is set by the state. Uh, which is also consistent with our four-shore plan and what we're saying in the P O C D. So all of those things will align to enable us to do this, but we will need to do a review of the regs, um, for this component before before twenty-seven. Other things that we can do that are required under this, um, talk about require or promote resilience for things like heat, extreme heat, drought, uh, you know, uh, precipitation, those types of things. And take a look at potential incentives to mitigate flubbers. Um, so again, there's the shall and the may, and as we get closer to that, and once the P O C D is adopted, we'll have the foundation to to go after this done. One of the other pieces, um, in this piece of legislation is changes to coastal site plans. So the, if currently there are exemptions for single-family homes having to go through coastal site plan review, um, unless they're within a hundred feet of certain resource areas. That exemption has gone away as of October first, which will be another point on the the agenda that we're gonna gonna chat through. Um, and then there's also specific times in which deep needs to review the coastal site plans. We're a little bit ahead of the curve because we send a lot of. However, um, some not all communities are quite as conservative, and so there there is more coming. But the big thing is that any single fam- any new single-family home construction in this blue area, that's our coastal management area, will be required to do a coastal site plan. And so the, there's a draft or regulation amendment before you later on tonight to get us compliant by October first, which is when this goes into effect. Uh, so something to think about as well. Yeah, so yeah, more and more camera view. Uh, other components of this bill, um, there are, you know, notifications on for relative flood um, for both purchasing or renting. Changes um in in real estate transactions that have to happen. Um, the legislation enabled resiliency improvement districts, so this is an area in which, um, folks can actually almost like tax increment financing, that there you, there's a financial mechanism to take the value of improved property and apply it to resiliency projects within a particularly defined district. It's not a mandate that we do this, but the the legislative tools are in place to consider it. Um, that's the same thing with the transfer of of development rights, right? There's this, and and again, not everybody is necessarily supportive of the idea, which is why I think they enabled it in the zoning regulations and do require it. Although your P O C D does ultimately have to provide a way to address it. Um, areas where you want to perhaps be more protective or deal with some resiliency issues or areas that you may want to intensify development, should you have the right soils and infrastructure. Um, you can create a system in which you can take the rights in the, in in sort of more vulnerable areas and move that development to a more safe location. So, uh, so that's out there. We will have some data requirements, um, so we are going to have to make sure that we are mapping and providing geospatial data for all of our culverts and bridges by twenty-eight. Um, and so that's something that D B W is starting to work on now because it's it's a lift. Um, so we'll go through that and then that will be maintained, um, at the the regional level. So again, looking at how, um, you know, things perform with more water over time. There are lots of funds, uh, mobile transportation capital improvement programs that are administered through River Cog that can be now now be used for resiliency projects. So if we needed to do things like culvert improvements, um, you know, the uh, get, you know, gates on, um, pipes that are surcharge, surcharging, road raising, that kind of stuff. There is a mechanism to use that fund to cover some resiliency projects, so that's out there. And then the other two I just wanted to let you know about, um, there's a state water planning and Department of Public Health will have specific sealable lives or parameters, and when they're doing updates to their plans and they're considering the new policy, they have to take into account some of these resiliency measures. So that's all in in that one. Uh, this is public act, I think it's twenty-five forty-four. Offscreen a little bit here for you. Um, this is just an F Y I. We're having to move to a dot gov platform, um, that will, so your email addresses will ultimately be affected. Michelle's working on it now with with Mike Neff, um, and Ivan, so all of that's fine, but just just a heads up. Um, I know there's login troubles. Uh, we'll get there. Um, the next one, public act twenty-five seventy-three, this is where with the inland wetland commissioner training was was mandated, so, um, you wa- and it doesn't just go for the commission members, it's also for staff, so all of us are going to be retraining and and doing, anybody who supports, um, the commission will have that as well. Land use applications, so starting very soon, um, environmental health, economic impact or traffic studies that get submitted with applications are also required to include who wrote it, how much it costs, and identify any conflict of interest they may have for whatever reason. That is, that is new. Um, and so the, and and so the planning and zoning commission will need to determine whether these disclosures or failure to submit that information impacts the reliability of the particular study that was submitted. So it's a, it's another finding for you to to consider as we go.
So if we were to evaluate a, evaluating an application, if we found that, what's the standard? If we felt that the information was invalid?
Yeah, and it's sort of similar to, so let's say, you know, somebody came in and they did a a traffic analysis. And they spent, I said, I spent twenty-five hundred dollars on this, and here is the person who did it, who has no background in traffic analysis whatsoever. Or it's a neighborhood that puts something together and the commission says, no, we don't agree with this. You would still want to provide a third party to say this is not valid. You you've got to have a reason and a tie.
But we still, under, even under the existing statutes, commission members can use their own experience in your town. You can also contradict a a traffic regulation.
You can. If it's, if it's something where it's not crystal clear, right? Like I, you know, I found this guy on the side of the road and I, and he says my traffic's going to be fine. Or I've I've stated something and there's just no evidence or or any, you know, some background to it, that's one thing, and that can be a clear thing.
Because some of these traffic engineers were, you know, the first time I evaluated. Because some of these traffic engineers were, you know, the first time I evaluated one. I went through it number by number, step by step, and it was completely inaccurate. And it was as if, you know, I looked at the guy for, you know, giving him an hour's worth of testimonies and look, you know, here's your beginning traffic, here's your passerby. And his numbers, this should add up to that, and that should add, well, they didn't add up in probably two hundred different areas.
Yeah.
And so, and you're also allowed, just for the commission members, if you're not aware, but you know, if they've, just say we had an application, I'll just throw out the all of them. And their traffic study came on and said, oh no, traffic passes right by there every day and it's, it should be no problem. If you experienced, they're like, wait a minute, I go by that road every day and I'm stuck in traffic for ten minutes. You can bring that in and you can kind of override a traffic study by your own experience, so now just keep that in mind should one come in.
Yeah, and the cha- the cha- the challenge is is simply. Where, so depending on the scale of the project and the impact of the 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 problems that you're seeing with it. There are times when staff will recommend we should bring a third party expert in to back up that experience and then ask the money, absolutely.
Excuse me, yeah, that's when they bring those traffic comments and they put the line.
That's one way they get the the base data, yeah, and then other other pieces are sort of studies based on the traffic generation and then all that. But so it's, so what we'll be doing just to be compliant with this is we're going to be just revising our application supplemental requirements. And one of the documents folks will have to provide a statement about this. Um, or if they fail to do that, the commission can consider that as well. So it's just one more piece of findings for you to be be considering. Um, we can now designate ourselves as a city if we so choose. Any municipality can designate itself as a city. Yep, so I don't know that anyone is leaning in that direction, but it is.
You benefit of declaring yourself a city.
There, I, you know, I don't, I don't know if there's something like that or.
Well, that's why I asked.
And some of that has to also do with demographics and other pieces, so there's, there's lots of different pieces, so. If we want to go down that path, that is a tough council conversation. Yeah, um. So one of the other things, um, there's a lot of things that you use in housing trust funds, which we don't virtually have. But if we were ever to say expand the housing authority beyond just the Glenwood property or do some other kind of housing trust opportunity, um. Those funds can now be used to acquire property and to incentivize deep restriction to create additional affordable housing, so that's out there. Um, let's see, so there are, and then there's other pieces in terms of state action. Um, there's a task force that was formed to sort of affect some large corporations acquiring residential property, especially in areas where folks are buying up, you know. Significant coastal properties and that kind of stuff, and sort of farming about its rentals and that kind of thing, um or short term rentals, um. And then um there are there are some provisions that don't necessarily affect your decisions. But for folks who are in detached residential scenario in a condo, there's solar installation provisions to sort of take away some of the conflict that's happening around those. Um, P A twenty five one sixty four. This allows uh municipalities to voluntarily adopt a buy right process for converting commercial to residential. And this is something that will come up as a topic in and after the application that you just are will be receiving this evening. Um, but there are particular parameters here, it's something I want you to be aware of. So if there is an interest in going through an exercise to adopt, um certainly we can have that conversation. Some of these pieces, um, you know, the buildings have to be vacant or at least fifty percent vacant for at least one year, so it's a short timeframe. And but and then it's a site plan process um in order to do the conversion, there's no special exception or other criteria. You essentially say, here, you know, if you if you adopt this, you're coming in and buy right you get to to make this conversion. Um, and I don't know whether or not the commission is interested in giving up that kind of control, but it's out there as an option for you. Um, and then there was the big one, the the vetoed uh House Bill flag zero zero two. This one had a bunch of pieces, I, you know, it's it's not, there was some talk of having a special session in the summer and then something in the fall. I don't know that that's going to happen, but I can't imagine that these topics will not come back up during the next legislative session. Um, there's a lot of conversation around this. So some of it, um, you know, had to do with prioritize discretionary funding for communities that adopt specific housing allocations. Or adopting the state's fair share number, um and I know that there's a lot of controversy and discussion about that number. And the and and whether that's the number of folks want to use, um, a lot of back and forth, I think, behind the scenes with the legislature now. To to sort of say, how can we kind of recraft that? Um, there were provisions in this bill as well for ads of right middle housing for commercial properties, um as of right middle housing in general. So, you know, uh, duplex, triplex, quad, sixes, that kind of stuff, um. Is a is a thing, some of the other highlights, um. Let's see, the the tow- uh towns would be sort of held financially responsible if the court determined that there was an arbitrary denial of an eight thirty G. And the court reverses it on appeal, so there were some, but the private development community didn't have the same burden of financial obligation. And so there was a lot of pushback, I think, from the folks who were opposed to the bill on that point. Um, again, there were certain suspensions for eight thirty G depending on your percentage of of housing available. So, you know, again, I think it's it's still a work in progress, but it was gaining some significant traction. And it was, it was approved by both the the House and the Senate and vetoed by the governor, you know, sort of after those approvals came through. So I fully expect more of these concepts to be back before us in the next, the next year. And that's what we have.
Thank you very much. Okay, um. Let's see, we have draft for revisions of section eighteen of the planning and zoning regulations pursuant pursuant to public act. Uh, twenty five dash thirty three.
Yep. So all this does is essentially delete eighteen point three four for the exemption for single family homes. Um, and then I think heminacid was spelled wrong elsewhere and G P maybe another E, so we. But um that's that's really, it's just the consistency of the coastal site plans coming in for some.
So we need a schedule.
So yeah, so if you're, if you're okay with this, then I will bring it back and in September, we have September and October. So I can bring it back and formally have it on the agenda for, you know, sort of notifying the public in September and we'll be hearing in October. Or we can move this straight to public hearing in September.
Many bits worth are bringing you, putting it on the agenda for September, making sure that uh the public's aware of it. And then we do the public hearing. Have it great.
Yes, this is fine, you're just basically directing staff to go and then that's ready to read.
Okay. Uh, okay, so now we can move on to the old uh A M D. Which is uh Planning and Zoning Commission twenty five fifteen, which we added at the uh beginning of the. This is um. The receipt and scheduled for public hearing. Uh, planning during mission twenty five dash sixteen text amendment section to section twenty seven. To add adaptive uh reuse of existing building in the B two, B three and B four zone.
And and also to amend section twelve to put in special exception provisions for the conversion of the, for the implicit step reuse.
Um, we don't have an agent or applicant here today.
We don't today.
So we did, we just need a a motion to receive and schedule the public hearing.
So the question would be, are you looking for a public hearing for a quick turnaround on September eighth, or are you looking for a public hearing to open on October sixth? Alright, so we will schedule this at the break.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next on, um. Let's see, now we're we're on old business now, yes. Uh, six A is planning learning commission twenty five dash fifteen. The site plan or repair of the existing stone sea wall, return wall. Um, this is uh. Going to deep, we've gotten uh comments back from them. Is there an agent or applicant here to tell us about it?
Good, uh, good evening, I am David Venture. Uh, my company Shore Design was hired by uh the owners of uh one thirteen Shore Road Sea Spray. Um, and to design uh in various improvements to the waterfront and see various coastal permits as well. So we started with with D E P and the Army Corps and we obtained permits from them. And now we're before you tonight seeking approval of our coastal site plan application. And the the scope of that of that project are is is really just improvements to their existing bulkhead here. Uh, just some different views for you, this is at low tide. So it's um, it's a pretty, pretty old structure, stone masonry in construction, and there were improvements to it uh many years ago. Um, with the addition of a reinforced concrete footing. So some, some photos that at high tide, just a little bit more detail. And essentially what they're doing, and I'll I'll get into the plans, but so this, this existing uh concrete footing. Here that only goes halfway up, they're looking to just extend this to the top. Here, so staying within the footprint and then and then up from here, um adding a protective concrete cap to the top. So that's, that's essentially what they're doing. So in terms of the site plan, this is existing conditions. So you'll see that there are returns on both sides. And there's a right of way here that that terminates um at waterside access steps. So the scope of of the state and federal permitting was um both to repair these steps. And and to repair the, or make improvements to the groin, or I'm sorry, to the uh, to the bulkhead. And uh so it was determined that the steps would not be regulated by the town. So the focus of the of the coastal site plan application is just the bulkhead. So then here's, here's what we're looking at in terms of 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 sort of the new profile. So we're only going up about six inches in height, so we're not going up any more than we need to. Just as a protective cap on top of this old stone mason bulkhead. So everything is within the footprint, all work will be done from from land, nothing on the water side, um pretty clean project overall. So that's, that's the project.
And you uh, uh, based on what the state said. You've uh taken care to mitigate any adverse effects in terms of, you know, during construction to to the water. So that looks good too.
It does, yes, we have.
Any uh questions or comments for the commission?
I did David for venture, yes. That's okay.
Yeah, they, we, we see a lot of these blue road.
Yeah, yes, similar, I mean, there's, there's, you know, whole. Patchwork full of bulkheads, but this is.
Yeah.
This is another.
One of the easiest ones, I think.
It is actually, yeah, yes. Yeah, it's nice where it can be just all constructed from land and all on top of existing bulkhead work.
I would uh. We had to take a motion to approve the.
I like to, I like to make a motion to approve B Z C forty five dash ten. Coastal site plan to repair a fixed stone wall, a returned wall pursuant to section eighteen point two. Zoning regulation is at one thirteen Shore Road. Map seventy nine, block seventy two, lot seventy, lot ninety two, the zone our type half day of overture, shore design.
Eddie, are you going to, are you going to include the recommended motion with them? Are you going to include the recommended motion with the provisions?
Yeah, it's included. The fight, the fight is conditioned, corporate reasonable measures to mitigate. Potential adverse impacts to coastal resources, future water development. And the development activity, the proposed application as condition is consistent with C G S section twenty two K. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Close. Dean, motion carried, thank you.
Great, thank you all very much.
Thanks very much, Beau.
Okay, next on old business, uh, and last one, uh, thriving community plans. Uh, they've asked up to endorse this. Um. I, you know. It's not something we can edit. I feel since I've been looking, you know, at the P O C D as many of you have. I've been looking at these documents in the sec- in essence anyway for quite a while, so uh. You know, I'm like, I would hope that we can endorse it, but if there's any arguments against that, I'm certainly willing to listen to them.
I review it, as you said, we both went through them all of a sudden, the subcommittee have gone through these. And there's a couple provisions in there that I may not agree with one hundred percent, but again, I think that it's worth endorsing. And I think it can be overall scheme is 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 a good idea.
So, so I mean. Well, in that case, um, can I have a motion to endorse uh thriving communities?
I'd like to make a motion to endorse. The uh, we have. It's called the trade oriented, Asian player lower.
Okay, you got another turn that second.
I'll second it.
Okay, then then we, then you, okay. All those in favor? Both. Danny, okay, motion carried. And then your next one is the four shore coastal resiliency plan with its dependency. Uh, which they also asked us to endorse. Um, and so I've got the same. Yeah, pretty much.
No, but I mean.
But in the same vein.
Same thing, yeah.
And that, you know, like Bo and like anybody else, Eddie could attest to. Um, you know, and a lot of this is woven in our P O C D as well. I mean, you're reading the language and it's, you know.
I think that's a good point, that they're done, most of the language in these is is already in our P O C or post P O C D. Um, and there are certain aspects that we can touch on in in full with these that we didn't necessarily endorse one hundred percent. But this, this is not something we're tied to one hundred percent either. Uh, so and I think we've kind of went along that road with the P O C D as well, so. I'm perfectly, perfectly comfortable endorsing the uh the four shore coastal resiliency final plan and appendices.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, Dean, motion carries, thank you. Uh, now, Beau, we're on to you for the report on the P O C D and the fact that we'll.
Yes, we're, you get, you know, we're, we're, we're making good progress, but we're also progressing in crunch time. And as such, the uh subcommittee is meeting again on this coming Thursday. Uh, we've got another meeting on the fourth of September. And then I need eighth of September, we should be able, should be in position to uh submit the plan to the, to the entire commission. Uh, for their review and hopefully endorsement.
And I, I just want to mention, um, you know. The the speed with which the this is being written. So, um. It just amazes me, it's been done very well, very thoughtfully. Um, we we're, it's working very well, go ahead, you ready to say something again?
Oh, no, no, I absolutely agree with that too, I think, I think we've, we've got the right consultant, we have, I mean, any good work that this group has put in is is really astounding. Since a lot of, you know, quick turnaround, so, um, yeah, the only thing I would say is on September ninth, we are holding that for a public meeting. To show the public the full draft of the plan and open up a comment period that will precede the full body of the planning and zoning commission. So you'll get your own presentation, and then the public will get a presentation where they can ask questions, go through the plan, um, provide any comments. And we'll have sort of a date in deeper comments and by, so that on October sixth, this full body can vote hopefully to approve the final draft plan. So that we go into our lock period before we send it up to state for their comments and then go through the O P M.
Um, and if you like, even, you know, anyone. Who's on with commission is uh welcome to join us. Who's on with commission is uh welcome to join us four times a meeting, right, uh Thursday?
Maybe Thursday is at five P M and it's going to be a virtual meeting uh because of the known rooms available.
Okay. So uh please, uh you know, if you're able to attend, do some, okay. Um I think it, you know. Good play, like. Bobo's has done a very good job meeting us through this, but as much as you know, can educate yourself in advance, it's better. Because the time line is tight.
Yeah, and I think it's a, it's a tribute to the, to the people that we have writing this for us, that they've listened to all our comments and have kind of. Kind of taken everybody's comments into consideration uh to come up with a proposal that they have. They compare them to the last time we did this, like ninety day.
We got a good group, hopefully. Okay, uh correspondence and bills. None, okay. Uh in that case, we are going to need a motion to go into executive discussion, discuss pending litigation. Um I would like to invite attorney Carol or Donald Leonard, Abby. Planning, um Cathy is our zoning enforcement officer, Gloria is our, we have youth. Join us. Uh may I have that motion?
I'll make a motion to go into the particular session, invite the host.
Okay.